Yeah. Counselor Campbell.
Here.
Counselor Siomo. Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamontina. Counselor McCarthy. I think he's here. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu. And Counselor Zachem.
Mr. Vice President, we have a forum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I'd like to call up Counselor Jackson for the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are in the presence of greatness. We have the right Reverend. Theologian in the city is her title, June R. Davis Cooper. June is Executive Director of City Mission, which is the second oldest nonprofit organization in the country. City Mission, formerly City Mission Society, was formed in 1816 to carry out social justice in Boston. She has over thirty years of management experience in health and human services and community organizing. She managed the Boston Health Start Program, which has been credited with significantly decreasing the infant mortality rate in the city of Boston in the late 90s. She has served as a consultant to nonprofit and government sectors locally and nationally. June has held academic appointments at Boston College School of Social Work, Boston University School of Social Work, Andover Newton Theological School, and Simmons College. She has served as a diversity consultant to Fortune 500 organizations around the country. She holds a BA in sociology from Newton College of the Sacred Heart, a master's of social planning from Boston College School of Social Work, and a master in divinity from Andover Newton Theological School. She is ordained American Baptist minister, and she has standing in the United Church of Christ. June is also the theologian in the city at Old South Church in Boston Mass. In this role, June is engaging in building the congregation and the life of the city. I think it's awesome that there are two powerful women over there at Old South Church doing many great things, including Senior Minister Nancy Taylor. June values the promise of what can be accomplished by mobilizing people of good faith to overcome social injustice. She lives in Boston and is a model train enthusiast. Oh, I know that. Okay, that's pretty cool. That's pretty cool. This is June on paper. What I've seen from her is literally doing the work that the Good Book speaks about. She clothes young people. As recently as last year, I was with her at the Russell School. How many coats did you hand out?
We give out a coat to every child in this school and their siblings, so about six hundred.
Six hundred coats at this one school, and thousands of coats around the city of Boston. She not only talks the talk and preaches the sermon, but she absolutely walks the walk. I give you Reverend June R. Davis Cooper.
Thank you, Tio. It's so good to be here, and being a Baptist minister, I won't keep you too long. But I just have to say that it's quite an honor, and I want to thank you for the work that you do. And in many ways, we partner together to support people in this beautiful, but yet complex city that we call Boston. So I want to thank you for that. And it's so good to get in this chamber, because I'm usually watching it on cable. That's my one station, so I see it all. I see it all. You can tell I don't have a life if I'm watching you guys at eleven and two in the morning and all that. So would you pray with me? Wise and loving God, hear our prayer this day. We thank you for your faithfulness and for the abundant blessings you have poured out on us and this great city of Boston. We thank you for life itself and for the measure of health that you have given each of us to fulfill our calling. We thank you for substance. We thank you for community, which we find when we work together for the common good, only to discover the unity that comes through diversity. We pray now for this assembled council as they begin their session. Oh gracious God, gently oil the hinges of each heart that they might, the hinges of our hearts might swing open and welcome your presence. Grant this council wisdom to govern amidst the conflicting interests and the life and death issues of our time. Give each member a keen sense of righteousness and ears to hear the true needs of your people in this city. Help us to resist evil by loving our neighbors as ourselves, and give moral courage to each so that they may continue to be drum majors of justice and architects of a city that is free from hate and oppression and racism and suppression and greed and conflict. May Boston continue to be strong, not only for its robust economy, but because it has shown love and compassion to the least of these, and given respect and dignity to everyone. Finally, remind each of us here that what we do and all of our accomplishments, oh God, are given unto you the glory. And the service which is done is done for your people, your people who you love deeply. And in the powerful name we ask all these things, through Jesus Christ our Lord, amen.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper, for those kind words. At this time, Counselor Jackson will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. At this time, we have a couple of presentations. I think Counselor O'Malley is first. No? Oh, yes. And also, Madam Clerk, for the record, Counselor Lamontina has joined us. Sorry about that, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Asabi George.
Thank you. Counsel.
Vice President.
Vice President Baker. Thank you all. I'm so excited to be here once again this year and to honor the Home for Little Wanderers, an organization that for more than 200 years has done whatever it takes to strengthen vulnerable families and keep children safe in their own communities. As they gear up for the annual Big Wishes Toy Drive, I'd like to thank all of you for the donations from your office and encourage you all to give more. I'd also like to take this opportunity to ask those of you at home watching to consider making a donation to this toy drive as well. I'd also like to ask all of you, my colleagues, a favor. The Home runs an amazing program in partnership with Bridgewater State University that gives young adults leaving the DCF system that have earned a place at the university the resources they need to be successful. Nationally, only 3% of young people who age out of state systems go on to graduate from college. With this program, The Home and Bridgewater State have seen a success rate of more than 24%. 3% nationally at Bridgewater State, 24%. Currently, of the 24 students in this program, more than half are from Boston. They graduated from Urban Science Academy, the John D. O'Brien High School, my alma mater, Counselor Siomo's alma mater, Tech Boston Academy, Boston Latin Academy, Brighton High School, East Boston High School, and West Roxbury Academy. This program is changing lives, should be scaled up to local universities and talked about in each of our communities. Instead, their state contract is in jeopardy. I am writing a letter this afternoon to Governor Baker asking for him to not only maintain the funding for this program, but to find opportunities to expand it, and I hope all of you will lend your voice to this chorus and sign on. I'd also like to take a moment today to invite Samantha and Joan from The Home. I'd like them to say hello, but I would like to recognize quickly that Joan Wallace Benjamin, who is the CEO of The Home, is retiring after 15 years of service, and I'd like to thank her and give her an opportunity to speak. So on behalf of the Boston City Council, I'm presenting this citation to Joan Wallace Benjamin for her 15 years of guidance and dedication to The Home for Little Wanderers and to the countless children's lives that have been saved and you've had a positive impact on. Be it resolved that the Boston City Council hereby expresses its gratitude, congratulations, and best wishes in retirement. Signed by the Council President, myself, and all of my colleagues. Joan.
Thank you, Counselor Anissa Asabi George, Counsel President Wu, and the rest of the council for this recognition today. It's been my pleasure to have served the vulnerable children and families throughout Boston over the last 37 years. Whether for Boston's Head Start Program, the Boys and Girls Cubs of Boston, the Urban League of Eastern Massachusetts, or The Home for Little Wanderers, I've worked closely with the city council and three mayors to serve Boston's children and families. As the president and CEO of The Home for Little Wanderers for the past 15 years, one of the accomplishments I am most proud of is our organization's expansion of mental and behavioral health services within Boston's communities and the Boston Public Schools. Our work has created better access to needed services and supports for struggling children and families within our city. It's been my pleasure to have served the city as a community leader and as a child's welfare and mental health provider for over these years. I know, under The Home's new leadership, the organization will continue to make an impact on our great city. I also want to thank the council and their staff for these great donations, all along the wall there, for our Big Wishes Toy Drive. As you may know, we host one of the city's oldest gift drives. We provide holiday gifts and toys to more than 10,000 children and their families, as well as 25 other agencies predominantly in the city of Boston. We rely on the generosity of the community to be able to help families in need during the holidays, so thank you so much for your donations and for being part of our Big Wishes Gift Drive. For anyone that's still interested in donating, all gifts can be donated at our toy room in Roselandale Village on Corinth Street through December 20th. I thank you so very much, and have a wonderful holiday.
So I'd love everyone to come up and we'll take a picture, but on your way, if you want to just grab a toy, pick your favorite, and we'll include it in our photograph. Pick your favorite. I picked my favorite. I picked them out. I picked ones that none of my kids would have an interest in. I might have bought some of the dolls. I have the doll type. Okay, he's got the Tonka Truck. Sal's got the baseball glove. We're going to make judgments about which toys you picked. Pick one to hold. Yeah, yeah, well, squeeze in. What are you picking? I love it. Tonka Truck. I love the truck. There we go. Got a good toy?
Who are we looking at? We're looking just.
Just in the middle. Thank you.
Thank you.
They're taking all the toys.
Thank you again, Counselor Asabi George, and to our guests. We'll begin the formal proceeding of our meeting with approval of the minutes from last meeting. Are there any changes or amendments? Seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. And Madam Clerk, if you could please read communications from His Honor, the mayor.
Docket number 1521, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $17,000 in the form of a grant for the climate-ready Boston Leaders Program awarded by various donors to be administered by the Environment Department. This grant will fund increased community education and awareness of climate impacts and possible solutions.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Environment and Sustainability, Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise and I ask that we suspend the rules and pass this docket today, given the fact that it is the end of the year and is a relatively small amount of money comparatively. It's about $17,000, that, as the clerk said, will be used to train residents on the report's findings, as well as recommendations, so that they can lead community conversations and events on climate resilience. The funds will be used to develop and translate materials into five different languages, as well as host trainings and support program administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. At this time, Counselor O'Malley moves for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1521. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1521 has been passed.
Docket number 1522, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $3,922.88 in the form of a grant for Internet Crimes Against Children, known as ICAC Task Force Program Support Grant, awarded by the United States Department of Justice, passed to the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund the reimbursements of four offices traveling to the 2017 Internet Crimes Against Children Conference in Tampa, Florida, from December 11, 2017, through December 13, 2017.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Madam President. This is pretty self-explanatory. I ask that we suspend the rules and pass docket number 1522, which is in the amount of $3,922.88. It's for reimbursement for four of our offices to travel to this important conference in Tampa, Florida. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. At this time, Counselor Campbell moves for suspension and passage of docket 1522. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1522 has been passed.
Docket number 1523, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $2,000 for the FY18 Sustainable Materials Recovery Program, awarded by the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, to be administered by the Environment Department. The grant will fund existing waste reduction programs or facilitate new low-cost initiatives.
Chair recognizes Chair of the Committee on Environment and Sustainability, Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam President. Once again, I rise to ask for suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 1523. This is a $2,000 grant that will be used to fund waste reduction activities. In the past, similar grants have been used to purchase backyard compost bins, which are sold at a discounted price to Boston residents. So before I conclude, I'd like to urge the call that Counselor Presley and I have for really implementing and growing curbside composting in the city of Boston, as well as welcome compostable plastic bags that will be available and hopefully composted in people's backyards going forward. So I ask, once again, suspension and passage of docket 1523.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. At this time, Counselor O'Malley moves for suspension and passage of docket 1523. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1523 has been passed. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the next four items together. Oh, excuse me, it's the next section, anyway. Reports of public officers and others.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 1524, notice is received from the mayor for the reappointment of Joanne Goldstein as a member of the Boston Compensation Advisory Board, for term expiring June 30, 2021. Docket number 1525, notice is received from the mayor of the appointment of Natasha Thomas as a member of the Living Wage Advisory Committee for term expiring March 18, 2018. Docket number 1526, notice is received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding the action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its October 25, 2017, meeting. Docket number 1527, notice is received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its November 1, 2017, meeting.
Dockets number 1524 through 1527 will be placed on file. Matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 0199, order for the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities will host a series of policy briefings related to key topics in early education and childcare.
Chair recognizes the chairwoman of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, Counselor Presley.
Thank you, Madam President. The hearing was held yesterday in that Counsel President Wu put forward the specific hearing order for this particular policy briefing, the sixth in a series of seven that we'll be having, and again, a report that will offer recommendations and a blueprint forward after our final one. But since I was unable to participate for the duration of the hearing, I'll defer to Counsel President Wu for a report.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. I'll just do it from up here very quickly in summary, which is just to say thank you again to the Chair and my colleagues for participating in this series. We heard yesterday from Professor Erin Kelly from MIT, who is an expert in workplace policy and particularly has studied onsite childcare. She brought up the difficulty of the expansion of it and noted that incentives that the government has offered have not actually resulted in an increase in the number of workplaces that have offered onsite childcare. And so even though parents and families who benefit from it seem very happy with it, there are challenges in that it's not reaching the vast majority of children and parents who need it in terms of income level and background, and we, again, are having trouble incentivizing workplaces to take this up. So it was an interesting conversation. I want to thank, again, my colleagues for being part of it and looking forward to participating in that report and recommendations. So with that, docket 0199 will remain in the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities.
Madam President, would you like me to read 1398 through 1482?
Please, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Carol Downs as a member of the Boston Redevelopment Authority and Economic Development Industrial Corporation, for term expiring September 1, 2022. Docket number 1470, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Terry North as a member of the Back Bay West/Bay State Road Architectural Conservation Commission, for term expiring June 30, 2020. Docket number 1471, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Pamela Beal as a member of the Back Bay West/Bay State Road Architectural Conservation Commission, for term expiring on June 30, 2020. Docket number 1472, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Ruth Knopf as a member of the Bay State Village Historic District Commission, for term expiring April 1, 2020. Docket number 1473, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Kathleen McDermott as a member of the Bay Village Historic Commission, for term expiring April 1, 2020. Docket number 1474, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Stephen Dunwell as an alternate member of the Bay Village Historic District Commission, for term expiring April 1, 2020. Docket number 1475, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Thomas Hoddling as an alternate member of the Boston Landmarks Commission, for term expiring June 30, 2020. Docket number 1476, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Lynn Smilage as a full member of the Boston Landmarks Commission, for term expiring June 30, 2020. Docket number 1477, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Kirsten Hoffman as a full member of the Boston Landmarks Commission, for term expiring June 30, 2019. Docket number 1478, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of David Buriducci as a full member of the Boston Landmarks Commission, for term expiring June 30, 2020. Docket number 1479, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Felicia Jacques as a member of the Boston Landmarks Commission, for term expiring June 30, 2019. Docket number 1480, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Diana Parkon as an alternate member of the Boston Landmarks Commission, for term expiring June 30, 2019. Docket number 1481, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Francois Elise as a member of the St. Patalaf Architectural Conservation District Commission, for term expiring June 30, 2020. And docket number 1482, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of John Cariff as a member of the Fort Point Channel Landmark District Commission, for term expiring May 1, 2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On dockets 1398 through 1482, Chair recognizes the Vice Chair of the Committee on Planning and Development, Counselor Flaherty.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Planning and Economic Development held a hearing Monday, December the 4th, to discuss the several dockets that you just mentioned, all which are either appointments or reappointments to various boards and commissions. All of these matters were sponsored by Mayor Walsh. Teresa Palimis, Executive Director, Secretary of the BPDA, testified in support of docket 1398, the reappointment of Carol Downs as a member of the Boston Redevelopment Authority and Economic Development Industrial Corporation, for a term expiring September 17, 2022. Teresa highlighted the makeup, the roles, and responsibilities of the BPDA board, and also provided an overview of Carol's resume and her accomplishments. Roseanne Foley, Executive Director of the Landmarks Commission, and Kristin Barchetto, the Preservation Assistant, testified in support of the individuals mentioned in dockets 1470 through 1482 in their respective appointments, highlighting their experience, their backgrounds, as well as the area of expertise. Both Roseanne and Kristin highlighted the functions and jurisdiction of the Landmarks Commission on each of the district commissions and the need for us to move forward with these reappointments. During the testimony from representatives of landmarks, the committee was informed that amendments would need to be made to dockets 1479, 1480, and 1481. The administration had amended the expiring date of the term for each of the individuals listed in the dockets from June 30, 2019, to June 30, 2020. And further, docket 1481 is a reappointment as opposed to a straight appointment, which was listed in the original document. So at this time, as the Vice Chair of the Committee on Planning and Development, I recommend that appointments with respect to dockets 1398, 1470, 1471, 1472, 1473, 1474, 1475, 1476, 1477, and 1478, and 1482 be confirmed as is, and that dockets 1479, 1480, and 1481 be confirmed in a new draft. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Are there any comments on any of the appointments? Then at this time, Counselor Flaherty moves for acceptance of the committee report and confirmation of each of these individuals. We'll vote one by one, noting the three that are in a new draft, starting with docket 1398, Carol Downs, for the Boston Redevelopment Authority and Economic Development Industrial Corporation. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1398 has been confirmed. Docket 1398 has been confirmed. Docket 1470 for Terry North for the Back Bay West/Bay State Road Architectural Conservation Commission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. And docket 1470 has been confirmed. Docket 1471, Pamela Beal for Back Bay West/Bay State Road Architectural Conservation Commission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Pamela Beal has been confirmed. Docket 1472 for the confirmation of Ruth Knopf for the Bay Village Historic District Commission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. And Ruth Knopf has been reappointed. Docket 1473 for the confirmation of Kathleen McDermott for the Bay Village Historic District Commission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. And docket 1473 has been confirmed. Docket 1474 for Stephen Dunwell on the Bay Village Historic District Commission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. And Stephen Dunwell has been confirmed. Docket 1475 for Thomas Hodling on the Boston Landmarks Commission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. And docket 1475 has been confirmed. Docket 1476 for Lynn Smilage for the Boston Landmarks Commission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. And Lynn Smilage has been confirmed. Docket 1477, the reappointment of Kirsten Hoffman for the Boston Landmarks Commission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. And docket 1477 has been confirmed. Docket 1478 for David Buraducci on the Boston Landmarks Commission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. And docket 1478 has been confirmed. Docket 1479 in new draft for Felicia Jacques on the Boston Landmarks Commission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Felicia Jacques has been confirmed. Docket 1480 in a new draft for Diana Parcon for the Boston Landmarks Commission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. And docket 1480 has been confirmed in a new draft. Docket 1481 in a new draft for Francois Elise on the St. Patoche Architectural Conservation District Commission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1481 has been confirmed in a new draft. And finally, docket 1482, John Karaf for the Fort Point Channel Landmark District Commission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1482 has been confirmed.
Docket number 1433, order for the City Council's Special Committee on the Community Preservation Act, hold interviews of finalists for appointments to the Community Preservation Committee.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on, Chair of the Special Committee on the Community Preservation Act, Council Flaherty.
Thank you, Madam President. The Special Committee on Community Preservation Act held a hearing yesterday, December 5th, during which we invited the four finalists to come for a public hearing to be vetted by the full council, providing one last platform for both our colleagues who were not able to attend the interviews, and also for the four finalists to reiterate their thoughts and their plans and desire to serve. So as a result of that, we had initially indicated that we would be moving for passage today. However, we were expecting the five from the administration, so because we still have time on the clock and in the interest of doing the council's four with the administration five, we're going to hold off until next week. So at this time, as the chair, I recommend the matter stay in committee until further action, and we'll plan to file a committee report for next week's agenda and have the vote take place at that time. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Docket 1433 will remain in the Special Committee on the Community Preservation Act.
Docket number 1064, ordinance to provide for the safe disposal of sharps.
Again, Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Council Flaherty.
Thank you, Madam President. This matter was sponsored by our colleague, City Councilor Nisa Asabi George, and referred to the committee back on August 2nd, 2017. We held a committee hearing back on August 16, 2017, and we also held a working session yesterday, December 5th of 2017. At this time, through the lead sponsor, the recommendation is that she would like the matter to stay in committee for further action, so recommending that that happen, but also at this time defer to the lead sponsor to what I thought was a very informative hearing that we had yesterday that several of our colleagues attended through Council Asabi George's leadership. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Council Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to thank Council Flaherty for his chairmanship through this process to date. I'd also like to thank Councilors Baker and McCarthy for joining us yesterday and for their ongoing support through this process. We were joined yesterday by Monica Lupe Valdez, Executive Director of the Boston Public Health Commission, Jen Tracy from the Office of Recovery Services, and Devin Larkin from the Bureau of Recovery Services. I'm also, we were also joined by a number of advocates and representatives from various pharmacy folks. I'm also grateful for the support of Mayor Walsh and his administration on this work. Over the past several months, I've been working to get as much feedback as possible on this ordinance. I have met with representatives from local and independent pharmacies, big box retailers, and our community health centers, the Massachusetts Board of Pharmacy, community organizations, and so many others. I am incredibly grateful for everyone's thoughts and energy and confident that when I refile a new draft of this ordinance in the next session, it will reflect all of that input. I filed this ordinance because I want to keep needles out of our parks and playgrounds. I also filed this ordinance because I want to keep needles out of our household trash stream. The city of Boston is doing the best it can to keep these needles off of our streets, and we have an incredible and wonderful mobile sharps team that last year collected more than 20,000 improperly discarded needles in our streets, in our playgrounds, in our curbsides, in our alleyways. And this year, we know that that number has grown incrementally, and it's a number that we've had a really difficult time truly understanding. We also know that our teachers, our librarians, our public works employees, our parks employees, and first responders are all working on this issue daily, as well as our small business owners and our residents across the city. The reality is, we need more help, and the idea behind this ordinance is to give pharmacies a chance to be part of the solution and be a part of this work, not just a part of the problem and a part of the distribution of needles without really assisting and helping us get them out of our neighborhoods and out of our household trash. I look forward to refiling a new draft of this proposed ordinance in the new year, reflecting some of the changes that we know are important to make this an effective piece of legislation and useful to our, both our businesses and our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Asabi George. At this time, through the motion of the Chair and Lead Sponsor, docket 1064 will remain in the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0293, order for hearing to discuss Boston Public Schools' student assignment process.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Education, Council Jackson.
Thank you, Madam President. And I want to thank Council McCarthy for attending and for sharing very enlightening comments, especially around holding seats, which I think is a really important component that actually blocks many of the young people who should be sitting in seats. And actually, there was a young lady who was sitting right where Council Presley is sitting, who noted that her little niece was actually enrolled at two schools at the same time, based on the Boston Public Schools' inability to get the paperwork correct. We bring this up because the council, as well as the Boston School Committee, was promised after the EAC process to have a report every single year. And now we are three years out, and the Boston Public Schools has not done their homework. They come before us yet again, saying that they now needed three years to have the P-value that they needed to actually do this report. Just as we would say to a student in a classroom, "That's unacceptable." We said that to the Boston Public Schools. This is absolutely unacceptable, and this delay means that we have no indication as to whether or not the home-based assignment system is better or not relative to the quality of education for our young people, relative to access and opportunity, relative to how homeless students, now that we have 4,000 homeless students. How are they doing, the most vulnerable students in the city of Boston? We have no idea based on the Boston Public Schools' essential, essentially unwillingness to do their report. They came before us and let us know that they had put out an RFP, and that the RFP would be codified this month, and the reporting process in terms of gathering would begin in 2018. I noted that that is absolutely unacceptable. It breaks the promise that they made, and it also means that we go for yet another year without the information that we needed. We requested the algorithm be made public to everyone in the city of Boston, and that the information be sent to the Boston City Council. Information about what level, what actually, where homeless students are actually assigned, and what level school that homeless students are actually assigned, and also information relative to that of holding seats, and also what occurs when a family moves. And what we've received at my office is several calls of families moving maybe a block away and losing their transportation. And so they had won the lottery, got to the school that they wanted to get to, but don't now, they now don't have the transportation to get to the school. And I guess it is critical that this body make people do the right thing. It is critical that this body holds the individuals and organizations that come before accountable. And we've heard over the past week that there have been issues relative to the IRS with the Boston Public Schools. We have fiduciary responsibility. This body has fiduciary responsibility, and it is critical that these matters come before us and that we hold people to account relative to those issues. This is yet another time where BPS has come before us, just as they came before us and said they're going to save $10 million on transportation and never save $10 million on transportation. We, as a body, have to stand up and hold Boston Public Schools, a third of our budget, to account to make sure that they do this. And I look forward to this information that we've requested coming in before the end of the year, but if not, again, that will mean that the Boston Public Schools has broken a promise. I would ask that this stay in committee. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Jackson. Docket number 0293 will remain in the Committee on Education. motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 1528, Council Wu offered the following order, proposing that the City Council enter into executive session to discuss internal personnel matters during a meeting on December 6, 2017.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I propose this order to ask us to vote to enter into executive session today to follow up on internal personnel matters, as we've had ongoing discussions around roles and responsibilities around the City Council's central staff. I would suggest that we take the vote, as you all know, it needs to be a roll call vote to enter, to authorize executive session, so I would recommend we take the vote at this point in the meeting, but wait until all official business is finished, do the executive session at the end, and then reconvene to close out the meeting. Are there any questions or comments on this? No? Okay. Then, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll for docket 1528?
Thank you, Madam President. Council Baker.
Yes.
Council Baker, yes. Council Campbell.
Yes.
Council Campbell, yes. Council Siomo.
Yes.
Council Siomo, yes. Council Asabi George. Council Asabi George, yes. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Jackson.
Yes.
Council Jackson, yes. Council Lamatina.
Yes.
Council Lamatina, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council McCarthy, yes. Council O'Malley.
Yes.
Council O'Malley, yes. Council Presley. Council Presley, yes. Council Wu.
Yes.
Council Wu, yes. And Council Zachem. Council Zachem, yes. Madam President, you have a unanimous vote to move to executive session.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 1528 has been passed, and after the green sheets portion of the agenda, we will convene an executive session and then reconvene an open session to finish the meeting.
Docket number 1529, Council Zachem and Presley offered the following order regarding sexual harassment policy in the Boston City Council.
Council Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Council Presley for partnering with me on this. You know, as Chair of our Special Committee on Civil Rights, I think it's always important that this council, as a body, and us as individuals, do everything we can to ensure that people in the city of Boston, and certainly those who have business with us or are employed or otherwise in Boston City Council, are safe from harassment, discrimination on any basis, including obviously sexual harassment. You know, this came about through discussions with myself and Council Presley, and it really was the last few weeks and months, as more of these stories have poured out across the country, including unfortunately here in the Commonwealth, and including in many legislative bodies around the country, gave me a lot of pause to really reflect on my own privilege and naivete when it comes to these things. It's certainly not an issue I personally had to deal with in my career or in my, in my school days, and it really, I think, became an opportunity to make sure that what we have here in the City Council, we govern our own operations as individual counselors, but also as a body with central staff, with individual office staffs, with interns, with volunteers, with people who have business before us, need to make sure we're doing everything I can, we can. You know, this is, this hearing order is not investigatory, it's not accusatory. I'm personally not aware of any current issues, but then again, you know, how would I know about that? How would any of us know if it's not happening directly in front of us? And if people don't feel that they can come forward and report issues without fear of retaliation or further harassment. So I'm looking forward to having this hearing. I look forward to talking to experts in the field, both in HR, compliance, the legal field, obviously, current and former staff, volunteers or interns here, just to make sure we're doing everything we can, to know that everyone is going to be safe and feel safe, and most importantly, feel that if they are harassed in any way, or they feel they're discriminated against, this is dealing directly with sexual harassment, but whether it's racially based or otherwise, people need to know that this is a body that cares about making it safe for everyone, and we're going to employ best practices. Now, it's, obviously, it's difficult to have one policy when we have 13 different councils, well, 12 for this month, but we need to do all we can, because right now, there's clearly been a groundswell of change on this issue across the country. I think that's important and obviously long overdue, but we really, I felt personally, and I think as a body, we need to be doing everything we can to make sure that, one, this isn't occurring here in the Boston City Council, but if it does in the future, or if it has, that anyone, regardless of their status here, whether it's an elected official, whether it's a chief of staff, whether it's an intern, feels that they can come forward. So look forward to working with experts in this field and with all my colleagues to put best practices in place, and I really want to thank Council Presley for her partnership on this, and I look forward to continuing our work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Zachem. Council Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I want to thank my colleague and good friend, Council Zachem, for his partnership and leadership on this issue. What Council Zachem and I are bringing forward today, I believe, is really consistent, it's a consistent demonstration of our commitment as a body to affirming civil rights. We have done this for so many issues. We've done this for tenants' rights. We've done this for immigrants' rights. We've done this for workers' rights. We've done this for voting rights. We've done this for LGBT and women's rights, and now for sexual harassment. And for this issue, it may seem to some that our leadership in this space is about a nationally trending conversation and some very brave confessionals about sexual harassment. But this is what we all try to do, whenever someone feels intimidated, diminished, devalued, or endures indignity in our society or in the workplace. The Boston City Council calls it out, and we ask ourselves, what can we do about it? That we are not complicit in our silence in perpetuating a culture, but that we are thinking intentionally about how to be disruptive and thoughtful, and to reform, and to be the blueprint for best practices on these very tough and complex issues. This is a watershed moment for raising awareness around sexual harassment, and one we should seize. Even before Harvey Weinstein and the Me Too campaign, more than half of U.S. women have experienced unwanted and inappropriate sexual advances from men, according to a recent ABC News and Washington Post poll. In the workplace, the same poll found that 30% of women reported unwanted sexual advances from male coworkers, and 25% from men who have influence over their work situation. And to put, so, I look forward to, with all of you, each of you, looking for ways to identify best practices for a fair and thorough process for any claim of sexual harassment. We have done so much work as a body and continue to, in the name of and in the spirit of equity. And so in the spirit of equity where this issue is concerned, everyone deserves an equity in safety. So I look forward to where we go from here, and again, I thank Council Zachem for his leadership and partnership.
Thank you, Council Presley. Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Please add my name, Madam President.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please add Council Flaherty's name? Please add Council Campbell, Council Siomo, Council Asabi George, Council Lamatina, Council McCarthy, Council O'Malley. Please add the Chair's name. Council Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I just rise to acknowledge and applaud the efforts of Counsel Zachem and Counsel Presley. I also want to acknowledge that it's important that Counsel Zachem, as a man, is involved in this. I think too often what happens is that these issues get relegated and put in the corner of quote unquote "women's issues." Well, it's about time that men stand up. It's about, it's about time that men acknowledge our place with our peers and with the culture that we allow to permeate government, permeate relationships, permeate power in the city of Boston, as well as our society. And I just want to take the time to read something that really made me think. And it was posted by Talib Kweli, and he said, "Men don't get to decide what's misogynistic. Straight people don't get to decide what's homophobic. White people don't get to decide what's racist. Christians don't get to decide what's anti-Semitic or Islamophobic. Able, able and neurotypical people don't get to decide what's ableist. CIS, CIS people don't get to decide what's transphobic. Rich people don't get to decide what's classist. Bottom line, people in positions of privilege don't get to decide, define oppression. If we allow them to do so, minorities and disadvantaged populations lose their voice and their interests get pushed aside as unsubstantiated demands. Activism loses momentum and our society becomes increasingly regressive." I think it's really important that this conversation be had, not in our codified, really polite way that we speak in this body, and I appreciate that. I think we need to keep it real when it comes to this. I think it is critical that we hear the voices of people who work here, and that people have real protections and are able to have their voices heard in this body and on, on these issues. So I commend you. I ask that my name be added. And I ask, again, that men, and I challenge men, my brothers, to continue to step up. And I would just simply say, as all of these things unfold, it is critical that those in these spaces realize that these isms are one decision, one action away on a daily basis. I don't see these individuals as that much further away sadly than most of, most of us are on a daily basis. We must stay vigilant on these issues. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Madam Clerk, could you please add Counsel Jackson's name? And docket 1529 will be assigned jointly to the Committee on Rules and Administration and the Special Committee on Civil Rights. Personnel orders.
Docket number 1530, Counsel Wu for Counsel Lamatina.
Counsel Lamatina moves for suspension and passage of docket 1530. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1530 has been passed.
Docket number 1531, Counsel Wu for Counsel Lamatina.
Counsel Lamatina moves for suspension and passage of docket 1531. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and docket 1531 has been passed.
Docket number 1532, Counsel Wu for Counsel O'Malley.
Counsel O'Malley moves for suspension and passage of docket 1532. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1532 has been passed. Counsel Presley, are you signaling for one of the personnel orders?
I apologize. Counsel, I'm, uh, figure.
Okay.
Docket number.
Just wanted to make sure.
Docket number 1533, Counsel Wu for Counsel O'Malley.
Counsel O'Malley moves for suspension and passage of docket 1533. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Docket 1533 has been passed.
Docket number 1534, Counsel Wu for Counsel Baker.
Counsel Baker moves for suspension and passage of docket 1534. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1534 has been passed.
Docket number 1535, Counsel Wu for Counsel Baker.
Counsel Baker moves for suspension and passage of docket 1535. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1535 has been passed.
Docket number 1536, Counsel Wu for Counsel Sabi George.
Counsel Sabi George moves for suspension and passage of docket 1536. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1536 has been passed.
Docket number 1537, Counsel Wu for Counsel Sabi George.
Counsel Sabi George moves for suspension and passage of docket 1537. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1537 has been passed.
Docket number 1538, Counsel Wu for Counsel Sabi George.
Counsel Sabi George moves for suspension and passage of docket 1538. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1538 has been passed.
Docket number 1539, Counsel Wu offers the following order.
Chair moves for suspension and passage of docket 1539. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1539 has been passed.
Docket number 1540, Counsel Wu offers the following order.
Chair moves for suspension and passage of docket 1540. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1540 has been passed.
Docket number 1541, Counsel Wu offers the following order.
Chair moves for suspension and passage of docket 1541. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1541 has been passed.
Docket number 1542, Counsel Wu offers the following order.
And Chair moves for suspension and passage of docket 1542. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1542 has been passed. Are there any counselors wishing to pull a matter from the green sheets? Counsel Presley? You have the floor.
I'd just like to make a statement.
Oh, like a statement at the end?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that. Counsel Zachem?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. There are two matters I'd like to pull from the green sheets for passage. The first one is on page 6 of 12, docket 0878.
Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0878 into the record?
Thank you, Madam President. In the Committee on Housing and Community Development, docket number 0878, sponsored by the mayor, message and order authorizing the neighborhood development to accept and grant a $45,000, $45,000 from the Harvard Business School to the Department of Neighborhood Development to support shaping housing policies and real estate projects that will improve the lives of Bostonians and shape the future of Boston's neighborhoods. It was filed in June 14, 2017.
Docket 0878 now properly before the council. Counsel Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I call this matter forward for vote today, you know, in the interest of accepting and expending, as we say, this grant before the end of the year. It's obviously going towards important work at the Department of Neighborhood Development around real estate projects and planning that is so important to all of us and all of our neighborhoods.
Thank you, Counsel Zachem. Counsel McCarthy, was it this matter or were you, are you going to pull another matter later?
No.
Okay, great. Okay, perfect. So we'll start with docket 0878. No other comments. Then we'll take the vote. Counsel Zachem moves for, for passage of docket 0878. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0878 has been passed. And Counsel Zachem, you had another docket.
Thank you, Madam President. This one on the next page, page 7 of 12, docket 1394.
In the Committee on Housing and Community Development, docket number 1394, sponsored by the mayor, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant of $151,100 for the FY17 Fair Housing Assistance Program awarded by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development to be administered by the Fair Housing and Equity Commission. The grant will fund the processing of housing discrimination complaints by the Fair Housing and Equity Commission, filed, referred to committee on November 1, 2017.
Counsel Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam President, this is another fairly self-explanatory grant. I can think of few things less controversial than funding the investigations of complaints of housing discrimination in the city of Boston. Again, with the end of the year approaching, it's important that we move this matter forward so that the Fair Housing and Equity Commission can continue to do this important work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Zachem. Counsel Zachem moves for passage of docket 1394. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1394 has been passed. And Counsel McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'd like to pull docket number 1270. That's page 1 of 12, and ask for passage.
Madam Clerk, could you read docket 1270, please?
Thank you, Madam President. In the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs, docket number 1270, sponsored by the mayor, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $170,017 in the form of a grant for the Community Transit Grant Program awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation to be administered by the Elderly Commission. The grant will fund mobility management software and hardware that will improve efficiency of the senior shuttle operation. Refer to committee on September 28, 2017.
Thank you. Docket 1270 now properly before the council. Counsel McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thanks to Clerk Feeney. The grant is very, very straightforward. I want to thank MassDOT for the ability to give us that money. The grant will work for software and hardware that'll get our seniors to where they need to go. So I appreciate a passage.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy moves for passage of docket 1270. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1270 has been passed. Counsel Campbell, you have the floor.
Can we take a quick break, Ashley? A quick break?
Oh, request for a quick recess. Okay. Counsel be back in session. Counsel Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to pull docket 1393 and docket 1395. That's on page 11 of page 12 of the green sheets.
Thank you. Are we both together?
Yes, please, Madam Clerk.
In the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, docket number 1393, sponsored by the mayor, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant of $440,000 for the Massachusetts Transportation Metropolitan Highway System Tunnels to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund reimbursement to the Boston Fire Department for maintenance and upkeep of foam capability for firefighting equipment in metropolitan highway system tunnels throughout the city of Boston. It was referred to committee on November 1, 2017. And in the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, docket number 1395, sponsored by the mayor, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant of $50,193 in the form of a donation from the Friends of Pudding Stone Park, Inc., known Kevin W. Fitzgerald Park, care of LPC Commercial Services, Inc., awarded by various donors, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund an electronic security project to enhance public safety in the Mission Hill neighborhood, again filed in committee on November 1, 2017.
Thank you. Docket, docket 1393 and 1395 now properly before the council. Counsel Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket number 1393 and 1395, asking that we suspend the rules and pass these today. Both of them are pretty self-explanatory, and due to coming to the end of the year, we don't want to lose the funds. The first, docket 1393, is an actual reimbursement to the Fire Department for maintenance and upkeep of their foam capabilities for their firefighting equipment. The second, docket 1395, is a donation that was made through this Friends of Pudding Stone Park after discussion with community to fund some cameras for this particular project. And this is in the amount of $50,193 from various donors. We obviously don't want to lose that money as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Campbell. Counsel Campbell moves for passage of docket 1393. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1393 has been passed. And Counsel Campbell also moves for, for passage of docket 1395. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1395 has been passed. Any other counselors wishing to pull a matter from the green sheets? Okay, hearing none. I neglected to mention six late filed matters, which are all personnel in nature, which we would add to today's agenda in the absence of objection. Hearing none, the matters are added. Madam Clerk, could you please read the first late filed matter?
Thank you, Madam President. On December 6, 2017, Counsel Wu for Counsel Presley.
Counsel Presley moves for suspension and passage of the first late file. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The first late file has been passed.
Sorry. On December 6, 2017, Counsel Wu for Counsel Presley.
And Counsel Presley moves for suspension and passage of the second late filed matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The second late file has been passed.
On December 6, 2017, Counsel Michelle Wu for Counsel Presley.
Counsel Presley moves for suspension and passage of the third late filed matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The third late file has been passed.
Counsel, I'm sorry, excuse me. On December 6, 2017, Counsel Wu for Counsel Presley.
Counsel Presley moves for suspension and passage of the fourth late filed matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The fourth late filed matter has been passed.
December 6, 2017, Counsel Michelle Wu ordered.
The Chair, Chair moves for suspension and passage of the fifth late filed matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The fifth late file has been passed.
December 6, 2017, Counsel Michelle Wu ordered.
And Chair moves for suspension and passage of the sixth late filed matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The sixth late file has also been passed. So at this point, again, after having our earlier vote, we will adjourn for closed executive session. The council will reconvene afterwards in open session to, oh.
Consent agenda.
Oh, sure. Okay. Counsel Presley, for what purpose do you rise?
Okay. Unanimous consent, just to make a brief statement.
You have it.
And I will do my best to keep it brief. So I've shared excerpts of this poem before that is really the official poem of my office. If you'll indulge me, I just want to share some excerpts of it today. The poem is called "To Be of Use" by Marge Piercy. And I'm just going to extract some parts of it that I think are most applicable and important today to highlight. "The people I love the best jump into work headfirst. Without dailing in the shallows, they swim off with sure strokes, almost out of sight. They seem to become natives of that element. I love people who harness themselves like an ox to a heavy cart, who pull like water buffalo with massive patience, who strain in the mud and the muck to move things forward, who do what has to be done again and again. I want to be with people who submerge in the task, who go in the fields to harvest and work in a row and pass the bags along, who are not parlor generals or field deserters, but they move in a common rhythm. For eight years, Jessica Tobbner, first as my policy director and now as my chief of staff, has led my team, the A-Team, in our common, see, don't stop, Jessica, we'll get you, has led our team in our common rhythm. Jessica, she has never worked for me, only with me, and she has done so faithfully and with a steadfast allegiance. And I don't mean personal loyalty to me. I mean a faithfulness and a loyalty to the work, which in our office, we always use a capital W when we use that word. Now, I'm not ashamed to say that I worked hard to recruit and to court Jessica to be a part of my team. Her reputation preceded her as a prolific community builder, as a political organizer, and as a public health advocate. Ultimately, I was able to, to gain her as a part of my team after a long conversation about astrology. It's a true story. But in all seriousness, our synergy, our chemistry, our bond, our partnership, save for my husband, is unrivaled, and it has yielded some really game-changing things for the city of Boston. And it has been incredible to be able to trust her as the steward of the policies that I'm proudest of. From sex ed to an expectant and parenting teen policy, to our work together on human trafficking, to our work on equity in the emerging cannabis industry, and finally to reform school policies to address the growing school-to-prison pipeline for girls of color. Jessica Tobbner is a gen- Jessica Tobbner is a general and a soldier. She is a dreamer and a disruptor. She is a woman of moral courage and conviction, but the nimbleness to negotiate like the yoga enthusiast and master that she is. She is water and she is fire. God. You guys know that our teams, like, they're chosen family. And the reason I'm getting emotional is because we've been through so much together, you know? My mom and loss and... Anyway, this work is a beautiful struggle. It really is. And, you know, Jessica's moving on to work for the Family Independence Initiative, an organization she's served on the board for and been so passionate about. They do incredible work. For those of you that have never heard of FII, I can assure you, this will be the last day you say that. Now the Jessica Tobbner will be with them. And so, in closing, I just want to say, I'll close with a poem, and it's one of my favorites as well, and it simply says, you know, "Piglet saddled up to Pooh from behind. Pooh, he whispered, 'Yes, Piglet.' Nothing, Piglet, said, 'I just wanted to be sure of you.'" Wow. And I'm so blessed that for eight years, I've always been sure of you. And I just thank you so much. So, if you'll all join me in just thanking her for her service. So, I assure you, I'm just emotional because my blood sugar's low. I'm ready to eat. So, thank you, Counsel Jackson, for the lunch today from Merengue, which I can't wait to enjoy. But, you know, Jessica, you'll have, you know, occupy permanent space in my heart and certainly in the annals and the history of this city for your contributions. We thank you. I hope you all join me later today in the Curly Room at 5:30 for lots of selfies and hugs and to bid our colleague adieu. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. So, I'll take a deep breath. So, as mentioned, the council will now adjourn in closed executive session. We will reconvene in open session afterwards to ratify the consent agenda and adjourn the meeting, and we will be back. So, council is briefly adjourned. I'm informed by the clerk that there's one late filed matter, which in the absence of objection, will be added to the consent agenda. Hearing no objection, the matter is so added, and Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Consent agenda is adopted. Are there any counselors wishing to make a statement to the group? Counselor Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Very briefly, I want to provide an update on a resolution I filed on October 18. It was docket number 1367 regarding the proposed gas line to serve the new One Dalton Development, the new Four Seasons Hotel, and other infrastructure and other projects in the Back Bay South End area. We, as a body, joined to ask the Public Improvement Commission, the PIC, to hold off on a decision. They were scheduled to meet on the 19th, the day after this body met, to make sure that information could be shared with us as counselors, with concerned residents, and with other neighborhood groups, and to make sure that there was an opportunity for public comment before any decision was made. That was now almost two months ago. I received the information I felt I needed, and I know that there are several public meetings scheduled. There have already been several PIC meetings that were well attended by folks interested on both sides. I think this, I'm certainly not a fan of continued use of fossil fuels in our city, and I know this council has routinely and regularly, and often with leadership from Counsel O'Malley and yourself, Madam President, spoken out on these issues, most recently with the plastic bag ban. And I think it's important that we continue this work by working with the BPDA, with the administration, and with the real estate community on how to do this better moving forward and not have to rely on this. But seeing that the thrust of that resolution was to ensure that there was adequate public information and comment, I believe that part has been resolved. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Zachem. Anyone else like to make a statement or announcement? Then at this time, I'd like to ask counselors and guests to please rise. Today, we will adjourn our city council meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counsel Lamatina, Frank Scalfani. For Counsel O'Malley, Luca Lacambria and Bridget O'Connor. For Counsel Presley, Lowell Hawthorne. For Counselors Asabi George and Presley, Winifred Brown. And for Counselors Presley, Asabi George, Campbell and the Chair, Sylvia Farrell Jones. A moment of silence, please. Chair moves that when we adjourn today, we do so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. We're scheduled to meet again Wednesday, December 13, 12 noon, in the Ionella Chamber at Boston City Hall. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The council is adjourned.[1706.51]